All right, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second? A second? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, first thing we're gonna do tonight is have a work session on two things. The trailers up at GM, which I just got to tour today, which are a true joy. And school board civility code and roles and responsibilities. So we'll just sit down at the table and then come back up here. You ready for me?
Yeah, we'll just move it down here.
Okay.
Okay. Hello, how are y'all? So I'm just gonna, I'll go through this quickly, just a few slides to show you. So the first slide I'm looking at is just the location on the George Mason campus where the six trailers are located, if you're, hopefully everybody's familiar with them. This, some of this is just what we went through, the last presentation I gave you a few weeks ago. So there's six modular classroom trailers, they're all purchased in 2003. We had to wait till the end of school year so we could kinda get in there when teachers were out of there and kids were out to do some detailed inspections. But what we found, there's mold in the walls, wet insulation, floors are rotting, rotting walls, interior and exterior. And then some of the stuff that we talked about at the last meeting were just, the HVAC systems were failing, the fire alarms, intercom systems, decking and the ramps are all wooden and all just degrading. And the next few slides are just pictures of how bad the conditions are. It's hard, I know it's hard to tell with the lights, but these are some of the interior window seals in several of the trailers. It's hard to tell, I don't have my pointer, but at the top under the insulation, it's all mold. Do we not turn these lights off? I couldn't figure out how to turn them off. That helps maybe a little. I can, I will add this to board docs, you can see the better pictures if you wanna see it later. But at the top under the insulation, it's just pure mold and this is just inside of one of the teachers' classrooms underneath one of the windows. This is outside. Again, it's kinda hard to tell, but right under the window, the entire window seals are all rotten. And one of the things I mentioned at the last, when we did the presentation is all the trailers came with these bars on the windows when they were ordered. The bars held all the moisture over the years, so when we removed them three, four years ago, this is kinda what was left and it's just gotten worse and worse as the, as the things have gotten worse. And you can see the holes in the outside walls. And there's literally just one layer of the siding inside of that insulation. The other side's a very thin, like, trailer-grade drywall and that's the only thing between you and the outside. This is right outside one of the entrance doors, you can see how bad it is. The water sort of penetrates in right at the, at the floor. This is actually inside one of the trailer entrances. We didn't realize it was as bad as it was, it was a little mushy, but when we cut the carpet back, basically the carpet was what was holding you up. The carpet was sort of attached to underneath the window seal. And this is another, another door in one of the other trailers. Just to show you kinda how bad it is. So, all that being said, the facilities department just recommends that we do not use the trailers at all. We also, we wanna remove all the students and staff inside the main building. Demolish trailers five and six, which are the ones closest to the auditorium and the band hall, the band room side of the building. And the, but yeah, that's, yeah, that's the only reason. And then the other four trailers that are still there, just keep them on site just for storage of excess furniture or whatever we may have. That's all I have. Any questions or anything?
Thank you, Sevi. So, over the last year, we did inspect when we got rid of the TJ trailers. But again, we knew this year, just even based on the squishiness of the floor, that right when school got out, we needed to do a thorough examination. And what we are doing is relocating all six of those classrooms inside Mason. So we're doing some shuffling, you know, of what programs happen in which spaces so that we don't have to do, you know, a million dollar plus emergency replacement. And when we originally put the trailers in, we were creeping up towards that 900 number, 900 students. We're just under 800 now. Now, we do have some new programs at George Mason that we didn't have when these were originally put in. Our hybrid learning program not only fills that space, but they're flowing over to another space next year because it's such a large program for us. We didn't have our resource room that is accessed all day long. We didn't have our design studio maker space areas. So what we do have now are where we broke down computer labs. We were able to use one or two of those for things like study hall. So we're gonna relocate those study hall type classes and then put an actual regular, like, English class in there. So the admin team has done a great job of looking at the entire building. We walked it again today. There's one classroom that needs a little bit of help from Sevi's department, but the wall that separates two smaller spaces is actually temporary, which is great. And technology will need to do some projectors and a few things like that in those six classrooms we're moving into. But for the most part, it shouldn't be too difficult. It's really more difficult for the teachers. We had, out of the six rooms we were looking at, two of the teachers anticipated what was going to happen and already packed up their room. Because we let them know we were going to be examining them and they, just from living in those rooms, felt like there's no way they're probably gonna keep them open. The other four teachers had not packed up, so we're working with them. We'll be bringing in movers to help get their items moved from one classroom to the other. But it's always a big deal when you move a teacher and some of these are experienced teachers with a lot of stuff. But we're gonna get through that and get that scheduled after we wanted to talk to you tonight about it, just so that if you have any questions and then tomorrow we'll start setting the dates for their move so we can work with the teachers.
So thank you, Sevi. I'm starting to worry and every time you show up, the pictures aren't looking too good around the place. Anyway, I have a question. So are we gonna have a net of 10 trailers? Because you're keeping four for storage or you disconnect all the other facilities from the trailer to, just to provide storage?
We're still working on that, because this has literally been in the last week and a bit that we knew we needed to vacate. There are a couple of key issues for us that we're examining. Number one is we're having a mold test done, just so that we know how bad is the mold in some of those rooms, that, the four rooms that we possibly could keep for storage. Because it's not the floor that's the issue, it's the walls that are crumbling, we believe. So we're assessing that, if we can keep those for storage, we will obviously have to keep utilities on in those, in those rooms. What we need to find out is do we have to keep the fire alarm active? We believe that we will. So that'll have an annual, about four, what'd we say, Sevi, about 5,000? Just to keep that functioning.
Well, the conduits under the ground are all failing and degrading, so we spent, you know, four or five grand this year just to try to keep the alarms running. So if we have to keep them, we could easily spend more than that just to run new conduits into the main building. So we just don't know yet.
And the two trailers that you could see that where the floors are giving away and literally there were holes in the floor, which scared me to death when you pulled all that back and could see that, you know, it really had given way in a small area. Those two need to be demolished. We need to get them out of there because we don't want a maintenance person or anybody going into buildings where the floors are giving like that. So we're getting a quote right now on how much it is to demolish them. And we, we know before it was around $20,000 or $30,000, but every time, every year goes by, you don't really know until we see the quote. But there will be a cost just to have them hauled off.
And I would just say, I went up there, I mean, some of the walls that he showed, they're, they're like wet cardboard that were supposed to be hard. And if you reach in the walls, if you reach up just a little, it is soaking wet and your hand comes out, well, interesting colors. So I made sure to wash my hands when I got home. But it is, we're lucky, especially the ones that are, you know, proposed to be demolished because those holes are right when the kids walk in. And you, you know, walk in with your left foot, run in the threshold and you would just go straight down.
Sevi, is there, if you're gonna get new ones, is there some new technology with more durable and maybe something that's not wood? Or is there any new technology for these trailers?
Well, if we were gonna purchase new ones, we would probably purchase similar to what we bought at TJ. We spec'd those out specifically, metal siding, integrated gutters, no bars on the windows, things like that. So we sort of learned from what they bought in 2003 and we wouldn't purchase those same types. Because the TJ trailers were exactly, they bought on the same purchase order, the ones that we demolished already. So we sort of knew that the Mason ones might be getting to that point. But TJ were just so much worse at the time, but yeah, we would.
Even the ramps, I think, you know, having metal ramps makes such a big difference because we have the same issue, we're always checking our Mount Daniel trailers and the ramps. And it's a challenge just to keep the ramps where you don't have splinters and, you know, where they're well maintained. So there are little bitty things like that we're doing now that I think will be better. But hopefully we won't need them and we'll have a different facility.
So you said it was gonna be, you know, maybe 20, 30 to demolish the trailers. Is it possible then, is it possible to just leave them and not demolish them, but not use them? You know, just kind of seal them off so that we aren't, just for financial purposes?
The 20 to 30 was literally just an estimate based on the TJ ones, but that was, that was, they demolished all those, like, what, there were four or five there, four? So we would only be demolishing, okay, we'd be demolishing two, but that was my sort of estimate. We're waiting on the hard number.
Yeah, no, I just wondered.
But we could.
For, you know, just for cost saves, we just went through a tough budget cycle. If we could just, like, caution tape them off and seal them up and not.
You could, but, I mean, it's, it's up to the, I guess, the board.
Sevi, yeah, if I may jump in. I, I, as a school superintendent, would be really nervous about that. You know, we have students, are eager teenagers that often are on roofs of buildings. They, you know, can open a window, go through a window. We would be liable, so it would be very difficult. You could secure the main door, but the idea that we wouldn't get a vagrant in there or, and also it would become a rat-infested, yeah, very, very close to the building. I mean, how many feet away from the building is that, Sevi? It's not very much.
10, 15 feet probably, yeah.
But, so I mean, I think it could have some issues trying to keep them, just because they really are kind of scary.
But again, what you said earlier, because they're so close to the building, the question we have now from the fire marshal, because they're so close, do we have to maintain all the fire alarms and everything? Because if they catch on fire, it has to trigger the building and the fire department. So it just added expenses if we keep them and not using them.
So it's on the regular agenda, do we need to do anything?
No, it's not an action item for the board. It's just letting you know that we're gonna be moving these six teachers and we don't, we obviously want to keep the board informed if we're, you know, vacating classrooms. So, and I wanted you to understand why and just be able to see the pictures and, and then we'll get that plan in place started, starting tomorrow. Thank you, Sevi.
Okay, next is civility code and roles and responsibilities. Should we start? And sorry, I wasn't planning on leading this discussion. Should we start with the roles and responsibilities since that came out of our VSB workshop? And I've not heard anyone since our workshop who had any concerns or issues. But does anyone?
Do we have, do we have to do anything, Mr. Chair? I was saying, do we have to do anything, like, sign something or just review them?
Well, I think that's up to us. We've not had the roles and responsibilities before.
No, we have.
But not as part of the civility code which was signed.
We actually, we do the roles and responsibilities and the civility code, which we sign at our organizational meeting every January. But this one was a simpler version. And I know it seems like forever ago when we did our governance training, but we went through that back in February and looked at what is it that you wanted to update or change? And then we've taken all of those notes from the governance workshop and added those in. And the media section, media norms, was one section that was added after our governance workshop. But generally, you would have this, if you're a new member, when you get your handbook and then on when we reorganize. We do them really together, but the only thing you sign is the civility code.
Yeah, and that was signed in January by anybody who wanted to sign it. So technically, we don't have to do anything. Well, we need to agree on what these should say, but we don't necessarily have to decide that we're going to formally redo and re-sign everything. But if we want to, we could. Okay, so any, any questions on the roles and responsibilities first? Or issues, clarification? Because it really does seem like a long time ago since we were at VSB. And it was, what, five months, six months? And I guess since the media is really the newer part, maybe focus on that. I mean, a lot of this, let's face it, a lot of this is just common sense. And for the media, it's, unless the board has agreed to a position, people can't individually speak for the board. And when the board has a position, it should really be the chair or somebody who's designated who speaks. But everybody's allowed to have their own individual opinion at any time on any issue.
One, Mr. Chairman, just as I'm reading through it again, these are tweaks, sorry. These are tweaks, not major things. One line in the General Rules of the Road, it says, about halfway down, "Think before you speak in public." I just wonder if that should say, "Think before you speak." Because there could be private conversations as well where, you know, people will expect you to be talking on behalf of the board. I don't, I'm not particularly concerned about that one or the other, but it was just a possibility.
Yeah, I guess to me, I'd be happy making that change. To me, their "public" means anybody who's not on the board, whether it's, you know, in public or in somebody's family room. But you're absolutely right, it's really just "think before you speak." So, should we just change it to that?
Okay.
Anything else? I mean, as, as we're going through the civility code, if people have, you know, thoughts that come up, we can always come back to it too. Okay. All right, for the civility code, this is something that I think has been unchanged for quite a while, right?
Correct.
Because this started back when Ron Pepe was chair, I think, which, yeah, I know, way before your time, Tony.
I know, it's modeled after VSB.
Right. Well, okay, that's one question. Do we know, has VSB's model changed? Have we even looked into that?
We have more in ours than VSB does.
No, sorry.
We have more in ours, I believe, than VSB does, but we can, let me see if it'll come up online.
But Phil, because you had some suggestions, you wanna start going through yours?
Sure, and I.
I mean, you don't have to go through them one by one, just with the major points.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I did look at the code of civility that was the standard VSB version. And that was mostly unobjectionable to me. It was the things that we'd added that I had particular problems with because we'd added a lot of elements over time that had little to do with civility and in fact were substantive operating rules or things to me that seemed to be not associated with civility. My suggestions were generally, and as you said, I won't go through them all one for one, was that we changed the title because I think it, properly written, would be a Code of Civility and Accountability. I think, you know, along with civility, we need to make sure that we're accountable and we behave in a way that holds ourselves accountable to the public. And since some of the elements of the code or the provisions were associated with that, I suggested making that change. There were a few larger issues. The biggest one, and it's not chronological, or it's not, sorry, in the order, the thing that concerned me the most was the phrase that currently reads, "While working toward the will of the majority, respect the rights of the minority, and recognize the importance of achieving consensus as an important tool in community building." As I think I've said in other meetings, I simply don't agree that achieving consensus is important. It's got nothing to do with civility to me. I think it's important to build consensus and that we need to work together and try to have a joint agreement. But if at the end of the day, we disagree and we don't have a compromise, I'm perfectly willing, and I think we ought to vote 4-2 or 5-2 or 6-1 or 4-3 or whatever it is, because people ought to vote their conscience. And I think saying it's important to achieve consensus conveys the notion that once the group decides what we're gonna do, everybody should vote that way. That's not how I intend to operate. I hope that has nothing to do with whether I'm a civil person or not, but I, I thought the prior language was inappropriate. Or at least, I shouldn't say it was inappropriate. I disagreed with it.
Okay, one, one question on that. Why, I understand about achieving versus building and I think that makes sense, but why take out as an important tool in community building? Because that seems to be the reason to build toward consensus is, is to get consensus beyond just the seven people.
So I, I don't, I'm not as concerned about that, Mr. Chairman. I think that's perhaps more limiting than I thought it needed to be. I think working to build consensus is important for all sorts of reasons and not just community building. I think if you work to build consensus, you get a better decision. So I, I just, I, I thought, I suggested striking that, but I don't have an objection to the language itself.
Okay.
A few of the other elements, the, it, more towards the start, there's the phrase, "Clearly distinguish opinions from facts and render all decisions based on the available and verifiable facts and my independent judgment." And then it says, "And refuse surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups." I just don't, I don't know why the, "And refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or specials," actually, it's specials, "interest groups." I think we should just say, "Verifiable facts and independent judgment." I think that's a better way to put it and it doesn't really matter the reason you wanna base, may use fact-based and judgment-based decisions. The, the, encourage.
Hold on, so you think that's VSB language?
Yeah, I don't know that it's in their actual civility code, but that is, that's part of VSB training. I just wanna share that because they actually want a body to be making decisions based on fact, but making sure that you're not allowing one group or one individual, it could be a sports team or whatever, to have more pressure to get the school board to vote in a certain way or act in a certain way, and that's part of their training. So I think that's why it was probably put in there and I'm not sure at what point it showed up in there, but I'm sure that's why.
Okay, I mean, it doesn't mean we have to keep it because it is kind of odd. And when I looked at that, my first thought was, that got put in because something bad had happened. So, okay. One question.
Sure.
Are you gonna go two bullets down with encourage others?
That's the next place I was gonna talk about.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the current language says, "Encourage others to become informed and involved. Seek systemic communications between board and parents, students, staff, and all elements of the community." That just struck me as stilted, you know, what are elements of the community? And what are systemic communications? So as part of saying that it ought to be a code of civility and accountability, I changed systemic to full and open communications, because I think that's what we're talking about. Instead of elements, I think members is a better word. I'm not sure why the word elements is there. And I added at the end, "And sharing relevant data on the performance of the schools and board" as just emphasis to say, "Full and open communications." It's really explanatory text, it's not particularly differentiating or different. So.
You had a question on that?
Well, two things. One, I think on elements, that may have been in because I think some people are concerned that we're only focusing on the population that have kids in the schools. But I think putting, making it all members is perfectly fine because everybody gets included. My question is on the, the last two words, "and board." What data would you be thinking of? I'm, I'm trying to really decide what data there would be. We have data on the performance of the schools. I don't know what data we have on the board. So I don't wanna say we're gonna share something if we don't actually have it.
Well, I, I think, in some sense, it's not separate from the performance of the schools. I think performance of the schools was relevant to the performance of the board. I think.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I think one could have unique data about the performance of the board as we go forward and continue to survey people. Because surveys could show views, for example. And we actually do do surveys now on the effectiveness of our communications. You know, so for example, if I think about it, I didn't have it, when I wrote this, we didn't have it, but one of the things that came out of the recent school survey was that only, I think it was about 35% of the teachers surveyed thought that they were substantially included in budget discussions. Now, all of us went into schools to talk to teachers and talked with a lot of people, but it, you know, 35%, if 35% and only 35% think they're adequately involved in making budgets, then that's data on our performance that I would think we would wanna share and use ourselves to more, do more effective outreach around budget. That's the sort of thing I'm thinking about. Again, it's not, it's not a, that's not a significant issue.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me think. I just, I, when I look at that, I really thought we were saying we'd share something that we don't really have. But, okay, I get your point.
There was a phrase later, it says, "Exercise your rights and responsibilities as a citizen." I just don't think that's, that has nothing to do with civility or accountability. It's something everybody ought to do, but it doesn't belong in this document.
Could we add in, "Remember to breathe constantly"? Yeah, that was just a bit obvious.
I'm not sure why that was there, but it's, it's not mutually exclusive, is it? As in, is it a reference to while being a school board member, you also recognize as being a citizen? And so you've got those same, or, what do you think?
I.
I'm just.
I understand, Michael. I actually, I don't object to the phrase at all. I think, like I said, it's good advice for everybody, but I don't think it's part of a code of civility. You know, if it's, if you, if you wanna talk about putting that in the roles and responsibilities of the board, I think we can do it, but it's got nothing to do with civility or accountability. It's just, you know, it's something that you maybe ought to do as a board member. The, the next one is sort of the same. "Work with other board members to affect, establish effective board policies and delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent." I think that's right, but it's a role and responsibility of the board and not a code of civility. I think it's actually in the roles and responsibilities document, so I don't think we need to put it here and use slightly different or even the same language.
Well, one, one question on that one and also on your change about accountability. I mean, to me, this is a code of civility and governance more than accountability. Because there's, to me, accountability implies enforcement. And a code like this is not enforced. And a lot of things in here, like working with other board members, delegating authority, communicating, working toward consensus, to me, that's governance, not accountability.
Okay, so I'm not ha, I'm not, I'm not wedded to the idea of adding accountability. The way, what I was trying to say is that we hold ourselves accountable and we expect the public to hold ourselves accountable. And these are the things, you know, in our behaviors and ways of operating that we should be held accountable, that we promised to be held accountable for. I don't feel like the name change is one way or the other that important. The provisions are more important.
Well, I, I think pointing out that we had civility before and this went a lot farther than civility is a good point.
The work with, but that doesn't change the fact that the work with other board members is in fact a governance provision. It's related to the roles and responsibilities and operations of school board members and not in a code of civility. And especially now that we have. now that we have, in policy 5.12, asked non-board members to agree to the board of, code of civility if they're going to be on advisory committee roles.
No. We asked, it's, it's like we do with the school board. Everybody is given the opportunity to sign. No one is required to, and it's not a condition for being on an advisory committee. Just like, you don't have to sign it if you're on the school board either.
Understood. I would just say, this, this is a provision that's particularly about school board roles and responsibilities. And again, I don't think belongs in a code of civility and would not be applicable to a member of an advisory committee who followed this policy, because they're not a board member.
Right. No, I think, I think your broader point is, we have our code, and we need to adapt it for advisory committees, because they cannot sign the same code because they're not on the board. So, I think, to a certain extent, we need to change 5.12 to say, an adapted version, or something like that, because there are things here that just, well, I mean, there are repeated references to being on the school board that just don't apply.
Although, most of them are, I think, extensible. That's the one that really leapt out at me as, you know, because, especially as we change, "Respect all board members, parents, students, staff, and members of the community." If you expand it that way, it's not specific to board members, as I suggested.
Yeah. I mean, for advisory committees, I would like to keep this one, especially because I think we do need to make it clear that there is a division between the staff that support the advisory committees, but the advisory committees don't have authority over the staff. They can't direct the staff. The staff works with them, not for them. So, I think, having, and we have that in 5.12, but I think having that here as well is helpful. But anyway, point, point made.
The, the next provision, I've only got two more things to mention. Communicate, I think it's important not to just communicate and discuss, and I broadened it, not just to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction, but communicate and discuss the opinions of parents, students, and all members of the commuting, community regarding board policies and school programs. So, I, that is, to me, to say, we're not, you know, we're not all inward-facing. We ought to be outward-facing, and this is part of what we've, what, sorry, what the board, I was not on it at the time, but the board decided in terms of its priorities last summer. And then the last thing to mention, I, the, the support, the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff, and insist on a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff and other matters under board consideration. I don't really object to the support, the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff. I just thought it was simpler to say, "Insist on a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff and all other matters under board consideration." If, if people want to leave the first provision in, I don't particularly object. And then, the last one was, there was a ethical provision that said, "Avoid being placed in a conflict of interest." That just struck me as too narrow, and it is somewhat associated with civility. I changed it to, "Follow the letter and spirit of the ethical rules included in the Code of Virginia and Board Policies, avoiding being placed in a conflict of interest." So, that was just intended to make a broader statement. And I do think, it seems to me appropriate that, that we make a broader ethical promise, especially given the trust that people have placed in us. So, that was really sort of the set of comments I had.
Yeah, and that last one especially makes sense with the, the one you made at the end, where you took out the word "private," just say, "Not, take no private action that will compromise," but take no action. So, other questions? No? Okay. Well, with Justin not here, I'll relay this, and then I think what we need to do is figure out, do we want to adopt this and then re-sign, or what do we want to do? I mean, the one, the one odd thing is, really, we do this in January. We've asked, well, we've, we've offered this up as a possibility to advisory committees, and they really start in July. Well, in, in reality, in September. So, I guess the question would be, do we split and say, okay, we're going to pass something new for them, and offer that to them when they come back in September, and then do our own in January? So, it's just, it's, it's just, it gets odd, because we'll have new people coming in at some point in a January, and if we keep on the school year cycle, it would just sort of be off-tilt. So, I'm just pointing that out, not offering any help.
I would suggest for us to go ahead and adjust this for us, but I would say, we can potentially wait until we reorganize in January, but have it ready to go, that what we're going to do. But for the boards and commissions, if we are, what you suggested earlier, to just adjust this and change the language that fits more of what their responsibilities are versus when it says "school board" and all that, just take that language out, and any other adjustments, go ahead and do that this summer, and have it something ready for them to go in September, when they begin their work, and they can choose to sign or not to sign. But I think we should just go ahead and do both now, but we don't necessarily, I think, have to do a resigning of ours right now, being that-
Yes, because if we-
We're not that far off from January of reorganizing again.
Right. And if we make clear our intent, yeah, that's, that's, that's why I was suggesting it, because it'd be odd if we suddenly changed in the middle of the year, and then would have to do something again in, I guess, January 18 with new people. So, Michael.
I'm just wondering, is there any rule against making that adjustment midway through the year?
I, I think, well, I mean, for the advisory committees, or for us?
For us.
I, I just wonder if, if we're going to make the changes, that would apply to advisory committees, and it does nothing against us revising what we already have, and doing it in one fell swoop, and, you know.
Well, but then the problem is, we would have new members coming in in January, so if we did it, I guess we could adopt it now and make it go for more than a year, and make it go till a January, and then get us on cycle. It's just, when we have new board members come on, we would want them to also have the opportunity to sign, and if our cycle is September, then they would serve most of a year with, without that. So, but that's, you know, a logistical thing that's-
If we were to do what Michael's discussing, this is probably the time to do it, because there will be no new members coming on this January, it'll be the following year, that we have that potential of, of new members coming on board. But, again, I'm more inclined just waiting until January. That's mine, but I get what Michael's asking.
I would say, and just keep in mind, we impose this on ourself. We could sign it every month if we wanted to. So, if, if you want to get the new language together, and everybody wants to sign it, and because it's what you've all agreed upon, we can certainly do it again in January. It's always a great reminder, when reorganizing, to do it in January. You're getting ready to start the same night we reorganized, the new budget season. So, both of those items, I think, are great in January, but certainly, signing it in the summer is not a big deal.
So, I guess my only point would be to make sure that we get the revised copy for the advisory committees, like Lawrence said, ASAP, because there's no way they can sign this. It's not, it can't even really be binding on them. It does not apply to them.
Right.
Unless they're signing something that is complete, that is, is different.
Yeah, I mean, what it really comes down to, well, they, they did get something different, because things that were very specific to school board were taken out.
Okay.
But we need to make that more clear. And frankly, there's no time limit on it. So, if we were to sign it now, I mean, we could redo it in January, but if we don't have new members, it's still in effect. So, it could actually wait until January 2018, when we had new people, or if we wanted to do it every January, we could. I mean, it's-
I mean, if it's a matter of just signing a piece of paper, I'm happy to do it anytime. I mean, I don't-
Right. But I, I just, we have in our heads, it's, it's January, and it's really not. There's, there's no date. There's no expiration date. There's just whatever we would hold ourselves to. So, okay. All right. Any, anything else? Okay, then, yeah, we're actually ahead of schedule. So, good. All right. We'll head up and start the regular session. All right. We're going to go to a closed session briefly. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under section 2.2-3711, section A, subsection 1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, EPED assignments, and advisory committee appointments and resignation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Goodell?
Yes.
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 Okay. This should be quick. Fingers crossed, five minutes. All right. Could I get a motion to reconvene an open session, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. We can just do that by voice, right, Marty?
Yes.
To reconvene an open-
And they need to certify. Yes.
Well, then we have to certify, right? All those papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any ayes? All right. Approve. Could I get someone to certify the closed meeting, please?
Whereas the Falls Church Public School Board was convening, convening a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative roll call vote, and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies to, and two, only such a business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Goodell?
Okay. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
First name?
Ms., Ms. Gill?
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll keep moving. Item 5.01, Mount Daniel Assistant Principal. Dr. Jones?
I'm asking that the school board approve the recommendation tonight of Jeremy Farrar, who is actually with us tonight, to be our new assistant principal at Mount Daniel. We are stealing him away from Arlington, which we absolutely love. He's been at Taylor Elementary, where he's done a vast array of things. He was a steam coordinator, instructional leader, and, you know, it's always fun when I call people's references, and the secretary is answering the phone and basically saying, "Oh, oh, the principal's out right now, but you cannot, no, you can't take him." She just knew I was calling for a reference, and so, we're just thrilled to have him. And I know Ms. Kelly is here tonight, supporting him as well. So, with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Well, at this point, shall we have a discussion, or shall we vote to approve? Could I get a motion to approve the-
Yes. I move that the school board approve the appointment of Jeremy Farrar as the Mount Daniel Assistant Principal, effective August 1, 2016.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Goodell, would you call the roll?
Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Shall we have a few little introduction? Could we get a family picture?
Yes.
And then you have to sing your school fight song at the podium.
Both.
Yeah, you better know the new one.
Purple hippos.
No, they are, you a basketball player?
No.
Nice hockey player.
Oh, that could come in handy.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Mind it's easier just to do what we're told.
Just Photoshop the image.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Farrar, I would give you the option, but not the requirement, to say a couple of introductory words. If you're happy to sit down, that's fine, but, all right.
Highly qualified.
A man of few words. All right. Next, on the agenda, we have the approval of the George Mason High School Principal, Dr. Jones.
Well, I'm delighted tonight to be recommending an outstanding individual for our high school principal, Mr. Matt Hills. And as you know, we had quite a committee process. I think there were about 16 people on that committee, made up of all the different content areas, parents, and he was one of two finalists sent forward. And in the end, he is the candidate selected to be recommended to you. He's absolutely outstanding. And if you don't know Mr. Hills' work, he is an internal candidate for us, because he's been with us three years. And he has been instrumental at George Mason, in really taking a lot of our school board work plan over the last few years, and embracing it in a passionate way for children. And he has increased dual enrollment, which is something that our community really wanted. I give him full credit for us going from literally five students in a dual enrollment class to almost 200 this fall. Give him an extreme credit on the work that he has done with hybrid learning. Again, that was a program that was brand-new in 2011, 12, and now this school, this summer, we have 340 of our high school students choosing, not because they have to, but choosing to be engaged in their learning in the summer. And that is overwhelmingly, because he is passionate about doing what he needs to for children. So, I'm delighted to recommend Matt to you tonight, Mr. Hills.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones. Could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board appoint Matthew Hills as principal of George Mason High School.
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Goodell, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Well, congratulations and welcome. Come on, you, you got dressed up on a hot summer night, so you might as well take advantage of that and get a picture.
And because you're not new, speaking in our hotel.
All right. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. It is green. Yes, thank you. Want to first, obviously, thank Dr. Jones, Ms. Hi, and all the members of the school board for believing in me. And of course, my, my beautiful wife, Muriel, is here supporting me today. Definitely could not have been here without her. And, you know, I'm really honored and privileged to stand here before you. You know, I'm beyond thrilled to have the opportunity to continue the longstanding tradi- to continue the longstanding tradition at George Mason, where we do nothing more than focus on excellence. I believe that, you know, I've had the pleasure of working in this district for the past three years, and I can honestly say it's impressive to witness the passion shown by students, teachers, and the community. I'm also proud to say that I work at the most incredible high school in the country. And, you know, I vow to lead the Mustang Nation with the simple philosophy that all students can succeed. I look forward to working with each of you and continuing this longstanding tradition, and I thank you again.
Well, thank you very much. All right, now we come to item six on our agenda, public comments and requests. In accordance with School Board Bylaws 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. The first speaker slip I have here is for Jocelyn Potts. Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for opening up this conversation for public comments. My name is Jocelyn Potts, and I live at 343 Gundry Drive. Tonight, I am here representing Families for the Falls Church Way. I have two very short requests. I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. We are requesting an official response regarding the timeline for actions based on the survey that was completed by the teachers in the schools. And we are also requesting a 360-degree review to be completed in a timely manner. We'd like the review to include the superintendent plus all of the central office staff that makes major decisions regarding our schools. I believe you all have seen the petition that was circulated. We have over 200 signatures asking for that, so we would like to have some sort of response from you all with regards to those two areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments this evening? All right, let us go now to item seven on the agenda, recognitions and reports. Dr. Jones?
Carly Aubrey with the Department of Developmental Services is here tonight from the city.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to talk about the proposed comp plan amendment at 604 South Oak Street. At the June 13 regular meeting, the city council referred Resolution PR 16-31 to the school board, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission. The proposed resolution would amend the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map designation of low-density residential to parks and open space for the property located at 604 South Oak Street. And it would propose to have a school symbol for the property also. It would also amend the future parks map in the parks, open space, and recreation chapter of the comp plan to depict the subject property and the entire Thomas Jefferson Elementary School as other parks and open space. The subject property and the surrounding area is mostly zoned R1A, which is low-density residential, and that allows one-family dwellings, churches, public parks, and schools. The current comp plan designation for the area is low-density residential, with TJ Elementary being designated as parks and open space. We feel it's appropriate to amend the current map designation to parks and open space with a school symbol to reflect the city's vision for the future use of the property as park and/or school playground or facility, and that any such future use would be compatible with the city's adopted comprehensive plan. And, as I mentioned, it's appropriate to amend the parks and open space chapter of the comp plan to include the property at 604 Oak as other parks and open space, to then be consistent if the future land use map designation changes to parks and open space. And it's recommended to include the entirety of the TJ Elementary School site as other parks and open space on the future parks map, to also be consistent with the map, future land use map, and other similar locations in the city, such as Jesse Thackeray School and City Hall. The proposed amendments are supported by several comp plan goals, strategies, and statements, which are detailed in the staff report, which went to city council and was included in the referral package. The potential future use of the park is also supported by the 2005 Open Space Acquisition Report. The Wrenken Parks Advisory Committee will hold a meeting this Thursday, and then the Planning Commission will hear the item and provide a recommendation on August 1st. And the city council will consider the resolution at their August 8 regular meeting. That's it, I can answer any questions, and I hear feedback.
Any questions? Mr. Lawrence?
Just one. The staff note said that the city council is asking for formal recommendations. So, this isn't something where we're just taking information. The city council wants us to take a vote and actually make--
They would like us to receive feedback, yes.
So we would have to do something in the next two weeks.
And does this vote, this is-- Is there a quest for any amendments? Or is this an up or down vote? Or what is the requested action?
Probably an up or down vote, with possibly feedback on what the school board would like to see.
Okay. All right, so we'll have to take action on that.
Yeah, and I, hopefully by, possibly next week, we'll have more information on that property from our school side, and what I've been working on as far as the modeling. So I can couple that with it perhaps next week.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, and just in terms of changes, I mean, we can recommend pretty much anything we want. It's just, there's no guarantee that the city council would pay any attention. So, it's not strictly an up or down, but they would prefer that we not come back and try to get into a negotiation back and forth.
Yeah, I don't think at this stage it'd be necessarily talking about details. It would just be whether or not to amend the comp plan, the map--
Right.
--to parks and open space.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, and we will-- I'm sorry, Ms. Gill.
So, just for everyone's edification, by amending the map, does that imply that, is that a change in zoning?
No. The zoning will remain the same.
Okay, so it could still be, it doesn't-- It doesn't change the zoning of the property to say that the current owner could not go ahead with the plan?
Correct, the zoning would still allow--
Okay.
--single-family housing.
So what is the practical effect, then, of this designation?
If the city wishes to further look into purchasing the property, this makes it to where it would be our proposed use, whether that ends up being a park or a school, would be consistent with our comp plan. And there's also, it could be, you know, the 2232 review process. It could make that easier, because once you, if you have something shown on your comp plan, sometimes you don't necessarily have to do the 2232 review. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much for coming, Ms. Aubrey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we come to item 7.02, the preschool report.
And I'm going to invite Ms. Germer to come forward.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I want to begin by just introducing our team here. I'm Liz Germer. I'm the Director of Special Education and Student Services and Early Learning. And two of our fabulous preschool team members are here tonight to help me with this presentation. We have Megan. You might know her as Hersi, but she is now Barrett, recently married. So congratulations. And Cindy Dreschler, same last name. Ms. Cindy from the Frog Room. So, we're really happy to have them here tonight, so they'll be helping me. So this is kind of a, a little bit of an ugly-looking yellow light. I'm delighted to be here tonight to share some information with you. When preparing, Dr. Jones said, you know, this is all things preschool. So I put my head around as many different agenda topics that I could think of that might be of interest to you regarding preschool. And these are the things that I came up with. I'm certainly happy to discuss any additional areas or questions or items that you may be interested in as well. But I'm very happy to have our teachers here to talk with you more directly when we get to the portion about curriculum assessment and technology. I thought I'd begin by talking a little bit about the federal and state mandates for preschool. You know, what are we required to do? And the first thing we're required to do is, of course, child find. And that's required not only for preschool students, but for school-age students as well. For preschool students, it includes some additional items that we do that we don't necessarily do at the school age level, such as developmental screenings. Child find involves outreach in the community and actively seeking students who may have disabilities. In preschool, we screen those children. If they fail a screening, we put them through some sort of an evaluation and then determine eligibility for special education. We are required to serve students ages 2 through 5 who are eligible for special education with preschool services. That is a requirement. We're not required to serve at-risk children or typically-developing children, but we are required to serve eligible preschool students. And they have to be 2 by September 30th. Virginia is one of the few states that requires us to serve 2-year-olds. Another requirement that's a little unique to preschool is the need for what we call transition conferences. Some children between the ages of birth and 3 might be receiving early intervention services through the infant-toddler connection. Those are children who've been identified under a set of criteria as being eligible for certain types of services as an infant and a toddler. Any child receiving those services is offered the opportunity, and we're required to offer what's called a transition conference. That typically, for us, is involving the preschool supervisor going to the home of the child, meeting with the service coordinator, and beginning the dialogue about the transition from what we call infant-toddler services, or Part C, to school services. Because we have different criteria, different processes, different systems, and helping families navigate through that and making them feel comfortable and knowledgeable is an important part when we're serving such young children. And then there are a few state reports that we have to submit annually that include components specific to preschool. You might have heard of these in our state performance plan or our indicators. One of them refers to progress that children make. And that is indicator 7 in our state performance plan. When children are found eligible and enter our preschool program, we take entry-level data on their knowledge and skills, their social-emotional skills, and their behavioral skills at the point of entry. We do that typically with the information from our assessments and evaluations. When the children leave us and transition to kindergarten, or perhaps they move and they've been with us for a period of time, we're required to take sort of that time-to data or that exit data. And we report to the state, child by child, identifying information about level of performance in each of these skills at entry and at exit, and whether or not we've, you know, made progress with those children is calculated as part of that reporting. Another, excuse me, indicator is, indicator 12. If a child has been receiving early intervention services through infant-toddler connections, we're required to put them through the eligibility and IEP process by age 3. So we report, again, individually, child by child, if we met our timelines. And finally, we report data about the least restrictive environment or the setting in which the children receive services. A new field in Power School that we're reporting this year has to do with the funding, how the funding is happening for preschool students. And we have to report where the child's receiving their services. Does the child participate in general education environment? Does the child attend a community preschool or a daycare setting? Or is the student in a special education classroom? In the past, we have not met this indicator at the state level because our classes were considered special education classes, because more than 50% of the children were children with disabilities. We didn't have, you know, typically-developing peers to the extent that it met that requirement. With our new model now, we won't have any trouble meeting this indicator, because all of our classes have more than 50% of children without disabilities. Sometimes I hear the question, well, you know, because we don't have the family literacy program in the same way. We still serve those students, we just do so differently. And I hear, how do we find those students? We really rely on our social workers, our parent liaison, our ESOL teachers, and then even the registrars at the school as families come in throughout the year to register. If there's an unusual situation, they might reach out to our social worker. We had actually a handful of children this year who came in as at-risk children during the year who came from other countries. So, the social workers actually go out to the apartment buildings. They know the building managers. And we have sort of a network, especially for some of our Spanish-speaking families through Mary Gonzalez. We keep kind of lists and reach out. And we really actively start that process in January of each school year. For students with disabilities, we do bi-weekly screenings, developmental screenings. Every other Monday, after the children leave, usually the preschool supervisor and the speech pathologist or a teacher is doing a screening. If we start to get really full with those, we will go to a weekly basis. This is the data from this past school year. We did 19 screenings, 23 evaluations. We had 13 students transition from infant-toddler, and that's a high number for us. And that number is contributing to what you'll see with our enrollment for next year, particularly with some younger children. And sometimes, not always, but the children who come from infant-toddler connections tend to be sometimes children who have some more needs, just because they've been identified so early. There's something else that, you know, may be impacting them developmentally. We found 22 students eligible that went through eligibility. It's important to note that child find runs year-round, even though our preschool supervisor's not there. We get referrals and screenings throughout the year and use our summer school staff to try to facilitate that process. And everyone on the team is involved in child find. I'm going to switch gears and talk a little bit about the Virginia Preschool Initiative Grant. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. It's a program where the state offers some money with the expectation that localities will match funds based on their composite index. And they allocate so many slots for children to be counted in this category. It is for at-risk 4-year-olds. And the premise behind it is the state's trying to encourage localities to offer preschool services for at-risk 4-year-olds, that they have that opportunity for those types of educational interventions. If you are going to access the funding, you have to make a commitment to honor those components that are on the list. You do have to submit a written plan. What's important to note with the Virginia Preschool Initiative is the funds that are associated with this were funds that also were applied when we had our family literacy program. And at that point, the state allowed localities to set their own criteria for who could be counted as a student within the Virginia Preschool Initiative funding. The state's changed the requirements and has dictated more of what eligibility criteria must be used. And I'll show you that in a minute. The students, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, now in Power School, we have to indicate the preschool funding source for every student in our preschool program. So the students that we are counting under VPI are associated with that in Power School. And they're kind of tracked in terms of their performance through the master schedule collection, as are all other students. But particularly for those VPI students, they're in a separate category. One of the things we do with our VPI students, we must do, but we do also with all our 4-year-olds, is the pre-K pals, which I think I shared some data. We'll look at it at the end of the presentation. So as I mentioned, the state's changed the criteria. It used to be that we could determine our own local criteria. So, for instance, with the family literacy program, there was very clear criteria. It was a point-based system. Students had to meet a certain criteria. The state is really wanting localities to target funds towards students most at risk from a socioeconomic standpoint, homelessness, parents' high school dropout. So those top five bullets, those are the state-mandated criteria. So-- So we can't count a student under VPI unless they meet that criteria. So the challenge we have is going to be using those 13 slots. And it requires collecting information from families, you know, pay stubs and tax returns and all of that. And, you know, if families don't want to contribute that, then we can't look at them under this category. We are allowed to use locally-established criteria for 15% of the slots. So for us, that's like two students. And we will look at students such as, you know, speakers of other languages or students with disabilities. But English speakers of other languages cannot count, don't count under the state mandated criteria.
For the state mandated eligibility criteria, is that an "and"? They have to meet all of those?
No.
Or, okay.
No. If they meet any of those at the top, we have to actually have a criteria form that we submit to the state. And it's a point-based system. So if, they have to be four-year-olds and one of those other things of the top five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So talking a little bit about student growth and enrollment. This was our 15, 16 enrollment. At any point in time, as you know from the enrollment information you get monthly, you know, kids kind of sometimes come and go. But the latest data at the end of the year, we had 56 students total in the preschool. 14 of those were students with disabilities. It's important to remember that figure when we look at what we've got starting next year. It's significantly different. 18 at-risk students, 24 tuition-paying students, nine speech itinerant. I want to be sure you're aware that at the preschool level, just like at school age, but the difference is if you have a preschool student who's not enrolled in our preschool program but who's eligible for speech and language, those children may be just coming to the preschool to get their speech and language services. We don't automatically enroll every student who gets speech and language in the preschool program, although we do have some. This past year, we had 16 students for whom English was not their primary language. And those were the languages that the children spoke, Spanish being the most frequently occurring. I would note that one of the things that we've been able to do, at least this past year, and my hope would be we could continue, is we don't cap enrollment for the at-risk children. So anytime during the year if children came in, and we've had, you know, refugees come in mid-year with no English whatsoever, we'll take those children in.
Ms. Germer, could you elaborate on the undetermined category?
That's what undetermined, that's what it says in Power School. So I'm guessing that that means they didn't disclose it.
Okay.
For 16, 17, and honestly, probably this data is a little bit out of date because Cindy's been doing IEPs these past two weeks. But I wanted to let you know, as of the end of the school year, we had 15 students with IEPs already completed, but we have seven in process right now. So that will give us 22 to start. We ended the year, this year, at 14. And we have two transfer students potentially coming in. I say potential because you never really know until they're actually here. So we have the potential for 22 or 24 students with disabilities to start the year. That's 10 more. We have 15 at-risk students, 29 tuition students, two of whom are eligible for speech and language, five speech itinerant, and 16 children on the waitlist. What this means is if all of those children come, we're opening at capacity. With five classes, we're going to have the two four-year-old classes at maximum capacity of 15 students each. We're going to have one, three, four kind of combo class with 15 and two, two-three-year-old classes with 12 students each. So I know this is a difficult time in terms of positions, but, and I kind of gave Dr. Jones a heads-up about this, well, obviously watching it carefully, but I am really concerned. We can't put more than 12 students in a two-three-year-old class. Those classes are very needy. And I'm actually frankly a little worried about the number of paraprofessionals that we have. And I'm holding one vacancy that's sort of out there in case I need a seventh paraprofessional because we've got some children there who really, if they were in a school-age program, would probably be getting one-to-one support because of a variety of needs. This is our vision. Last year, the team came together and spent some time really articulating and thinking about, you know, what is our vision at Jesse Thackeray Preschool? And to use that vision to guide our work. And this is what the team came up with, and it's posted in every classroom. I'd like to actually get a big sign of this to put somewhere out more towards the main entrance. I think everyone knows our classes are inclusive. Our classes mirror the classes we have in the rest of the school division. The teacher in one para is in each classroom. We do instruction in a variety of ways. Our classes are full day, but we do have a 12:30 bus. And we don't necessarily have a class of children that go home at 12:30 because, again, we have some mixed age ranges in each class. But we do have a 12:30 bus, and the children can have breakfast and lunch. And we're very happy that we will have Richard Cain's food next year. This question I know comes up. What about sending our kids to Arlington or Fairfax? So I, you know, I've been talking to my colleagues there and gathered some information that I thought would be helpful for you to have, you know, as you make decisions moving forward. First of all, neither Fairfax County nor Arlington would serve any of our at-risk children. So they don't have the capacity to serve any of our at-risk children. Fairfax County is not accepting any students, tuition-based students. Their preschool classes are actually at or exceeding capacity, and many are above the state ratio. Arlington classes are full. They're really struggling with space. They're looking at ways to creatively serve children in the community settings. You know, private preschools, private daycare, sending people out because they're running out of physical space. And it's also important, if we were making any changes in serving our students, it requires parental consent because of the IEPs would need to be modified. You may or may not be aware that on an IEP, we actually have to put the school on the IEP. That's a requirement. So if we were changing schools, we would have to, we couldn't do that without parental consent. We would have to change the service setting from a general ed setting to a special education setting in most cases, especially in Fairfax, because they don't have general education classes for their preschool students with disabilities. And we would have to change the number of service hours because our classes are full day. Arlington has some full day, you'll see that in a minute. Fairfax's are half-day classes. So the hours would be different, the setting would be different, and the school would be different, all of which would require parental consent. So how much would it cost if we could? So the base tuition in Fairfax County public schools is $21,000. That doesn't count any related services like speech, PT, hearing, OT, vision. I just put 30 because most of our kids get at least one, if not two, related services and some more. Some of our students require some additional support medically. So just for our students with disabilities, if you took our 24 projected kids for the fall times that, it'd be $720,000 for us to pay Fairfax to serve just our students with disabilities. In Arlington, they charge, she said, just a little over $33,000 per student. That was her exact quote. So again, for 24 students, that would be $816,000 for students with disabilities. Again, no at-risk students served, no community students served. So how do our schools' preschool programs compare? You know, what's the same, what's different from, between Arlington and Fairfax? And we all, the first thing is we all have to serve students with disabilities because that is our mandate, that is required. So we all serve our students with disabilities. Everyone serves some at-risk students, but we continually take all our at-risk students as they come through and serve them. At, in Fairfax, they have waitlists, their Head Start programs are full. You know, Arlington has some waitlists. So, you know, they struggle, they're a lot larger than us. So it's, you know, it's more challenging from a capacity standpoint. Our classes right now for next year, what we're looking at is four to five students with disabilities and eight to 10 students without disabilities. In Fairfax County, almost all their classes are students with disabilities. And they're usually eight to 10 students with disabilities in a half-day program. Arlington has more inclusive settings. They do have a school that's like Jesse Thackeray Preschool. It's called Integration Station, and that's a very inclusive environment. They also have some classes that are inclusive. They also have classes that are self-contained, special education classes. And then they serve in the community. We have one paraprofessional in our classes. They have either one or two, so fairly similar. Our classes are full day, Fairfax's are half-day. Arlington does have both half and full day. All of our teachers in our preschool are both endorsed in early childhood education and early childhood special education. And that's important to note because really, we're required for the early childhood special ed because those are the only students we're technically supposed to serve. Unless we were a Head Start classroom, we would have to have early childhood endorsement. In Fairfax, they may or may not be duly endorsed in both areas. Many times, the teachers are early childhood special ed because that's what's required, and they're teaching a self-contained special education classroom. The tuition rates. I know you all will be considering, you know, the tuition for the upcoming year. We start in January with the recruitment, so it would be helpful to know what it's going to be at the time we advertise it so we don't advertise one thing and then have to change it on families. Right now, we're $5,000 a year. If you look on the right-hand side at St. Joseph's and Falls Church McLean Center, I put down what their tuition is per month, and I just multiplied it times 10, considering like a school year, just to make it easy for you. What's important to note with those is that includes childcare. That's not just school. So at St. Joseph's, you pay $1,020 a month, and you can be there from 6:45 to 6:00 p.m. Falls Church McLean Children's Center, you can be there from 7:30 to 6:00. I don't want to have school from 6:45. Do you want to have school from 6:45 to 6:00? So those costs are a little higher, but they include a little bit more because it's talking about daycare. I pulled a figure from Columbia Baptist. This is a comparable number of hours. This is like their four, you know, like their kindergarten, rising kindergarten level, five days a week, nine to two are the hours, and it's $675 a month. So it just kind of gives you some information to consider. And I'm happy to do further research if, you know, as you get to that point where you're, you know, trying to make decisions for the upcoming school year. So our team, you met two of our wonderful teachers here, I already mentioned.
Ms. Germer?
Yes.
Do we have data on the charge for peers in Fairfax County or Arlington? I know with Fairfax, you said would be, would be all students with disabilities in the classroom, but Arlington, you said, was mixed.
I would have to double, Arlington is mixed in terms, usually, and I'll double-check on that, Mr. Rattenberger, to get more details. I don't know what the Integration Station is. I think that they use a lot of their, like, at-risk Head Start kinds of students. So I don't know if they're taking tuition students, but I'll look into that and get back to everyone. So we have six paraprofessionals, one in each class, and one that's assigned based on need. We have our preschool supervisor, who's also the registrar, the health aide, the secretary, and the lunch, the lunch deliverer, and the breakfast deliverer. We have a speech path, PTOT services. You may or may not be aware, we contract for vision and hearing services. We don't have in-house staff. And we do have students that receive those services at preschool as well as in the other buildings. Robyn Borems, our social worker, she works with our preschool. Psychologist Rachel Lobell does a lot of our child find work. All of our teams work with Jesse Thackeray, but we have at least one point of contact for consistencies for families. And I'm very excited with the additional support you provided to add two behavior specialists. I was able to shift some behavior specialist support down to preschool next year so that we will have, you know, a person working with Mount Daniel in preschool. So I'm really excited about that. The staff schedules and responsibilities. I wanted you to be aware, I mean, we have a pretty early day in preschool. Teachers start at 7:30. The children, we're supposed to be at the buses at 7:50. And then they leave at 1:45. So for teachers, they have to really eat lunch with their children. And they get their time from 1:45 till 3:00 in the afternoon. And then every Wednesday for us is an early dismissal because we don't have, you know, PE, we have no time during the day when the children are with somebody else. They're with their teachers all day long. So we need those Wednesdays on a consistent basis. And the teachers have time to collaborate then with their colleagues and obviously celebrate. The paraprofessionals, you know, get their, they're not full-time, so they leave at 2:20. So they have a little bit of overlap with the teachers at the end of the day to debrief. Lunchtime is a challenge, again, because for next year, we'll have to really be creative because it's difficult, it's difficult to have a classroom with just one adult in the classroom. So we're looking at ways, how we can make this work next year. We love parent engagement. This was our first year in the building, so, you know, we're settling in. We're looking at new opportunities in the upcoming year. We've had parents over the past be mystery readers, room parents, volunteers. When we, you'll hear about our curriculum if we have a parent who has a special area of expertise. Say we're doing something about, you know, baking, and someone's a baker, you know, to come in and talk and do things with the children. We did some parenting workshops, and our plan next year, now that we're settled in the building, there was interest from the parents on having some series of workshops. So our social workers will be planning those for next year. And we had a really cute moving up ceremony. I just had to mention that, and I know Dr. Jones got to see that. So I'm going to turn it over to the teachers now and let them have a chance to talk to you a little bit more about teaching and learning and what that looks like in preschool.
Sounds good. All right, hi. So, we're going in the right direction on that, yes, good. All right, so this is including just like a daily schedule, what we do. It's not random what everybody does, but it's just a general outline, what our day looks like. So some of the things we do are fine motor activities. And we usually do that with our PT, also within our classroom. They're pretty creative now. We have bikes, which also helps with, I'm sorry, I'm skipping down to gross motor. But for gross motor, we have bikes now. We have, we use the playground equipment. We have PT time. We have, we have an extra room, a large room. So when it rains, it actually really helps out. We have a lot of equipment in there left from the PT. For fine motor activities, we have an OT who does push in for a whole group activity. So she does that weekly. And then some children, obviously, they're pulled out if they have OT services. Within our days, we also do fine motor activities. It'd be table time, like in the morning. I do a lot of stuff where I combine literacy with OT and just kind of give them a lot of opportunities. We have in the morning circle time, calendar and weather. And that's usually something we do with a smartboard. We have story time and center time. Center times usually happen about twice. In my own classroom, I do it twice a day. So we have a morning center time and an afternoon. And what I do is I rotate children. So I'll have three centers set up. Usually, it's one with me, one with a paraprofessional, and then one with, that's independent. And usually, something that I know they're able to handle. There's not, teacher needs to be over them. And then we rotate. And my class is really cute. They take their names, and they're, you know, each person has their name in their picture. And they're responsible moving their name to the next section to show where they are and which area they're supposed to be in. And we have a timer, I have a timer helper, which is really cute, too. So they're in charge of setting the timer, and it's a lot of fun. We have playground, like I said before, for indoor/outdoor recesses, that's for gross motor. We have small group time, and that's really included mostly in center time. That's where I include it. Breakfast and lunch. Breakfast is delivered for children who choose to buy it. Children are also welcome to bring a snack in the morning. And then same for lunch, they choose to bring lunch or purchase it. Brief rest time, that happens really depending on your class. With the older children, it's more difficult, I say, to kind of impose that. But with younger children, usually, they need that, they need that break, especially if they're coming from, you know, a longer sleep schedule or, you know, nap time and coming into our environment, especially two-year-olds. They get pretty tired. Hopefully, we will have music next year. We really enjoyed it. If not, we also do music in the classroom. We're pretty creative with it. Science, dramatic play and art activities. All right. Okay, so we started two years ago using the creative curriculum. And it's grown, I think you have it on the next page. Okay, I'm just going to pop over there a second. And this just explains, it has units of study. We have new ones, which will be listed soon. Each unit is about four to six weeks long, and it's inquiry-based, child-directed. They have a special section called Mighty Minutes, and that's really for brief time pauses throughout the day, you know, waiting, waiting in line for the bathroom, the little cards. And they have cards, and they have fun finger plays, songs, and kind of activities that are really child-oriented. A lot of hands-on learning, that's majority of creative curriculum. It's really, it's child inquiry-based, meaning children will bring up ideas. They'll say, hey, I had this connection from home, and we can go off on a tangent on that, literally. We talked about doing a, we had a ball unit. My class said, hey, you know, that looks like a planet. And next thing you know, we were talking about outer space and planets, which is, you know, the children, you know, they're already baffled about the United States and the country, you know, different countries. Like, getting to planets is really cool for them. Let's see, they also have suggestions for literacy, math, art, science. Each area has suggestions, and they have literacy and books that are included in the series, and of course, ideas if we want to add other books to it. And it's all aligned to the VA building blocks, and that's for Virginia. There's Pop Baptist. Our other literacy we use is Frog Street. Literacy in that's a lot of, there are a lot of big books and music sets and videos kind of go along with it. A lot of songs connected to each letter to help the children kind of remember each letter, the sounds and words that kind of connect with it. And it's really just pre-literacy skills. We have the Virginia Building Block Standards, and we use those to guide our report cards and guide our assessments. We have three-year-old standards as well, which we developed for younger classrooms. We do pre-K PALS assessments for four-year-olds, and that's mandated for us to do. We do that with all children within the pre-kindergarten classrooms. So any children who are four turning five are going to kindergarten next year. And then we do development assessments as needed. All right, want to pass one over? Or, yeah, let me finish this part. And this just lists our units of study. Somebody's, or, like, beginning of the year, something that we all do as a class, the whole school does, each class. And then the other units, we have teams, and each team decides what units they want to use throughout the year. So the younger two classrooms usually pair up together, and then the older three classrooms pair up together. And then new units for next year include sand, insects, simple machines, tubes and tunnels, and science.
All right. I'm going to talk a little bit about technology that we use at Jesse Thackeray Preschool. Right now, all of our classrooms do have a smartboard, and we do have five iPads per classrooms that we do use in our, in our daily to weekly teaching. We do follow the National Association for the Education of Young Children guidelines for using technology in the classroom. Our smartboards, we do tend to use more often. As Megan mentioned, we do use them a lot in our morning circle to do our weather, to do our calendar. We use a program called Starfall, if you're familiar with it, which is a really interactive calendar program, to get the kids into activities like counting. We count up to whatever day it is. We do, we sing the Days of the Week song. We do our attendance. In my class last year, we had a frog pond, and when the kids came in in the morning on the smartboard, they would drag their little frog from a lily pad into the pond, and that was how we, we got to see, you know, a visual reminder of who was there, and, you know, the kids started to identify, oh, my friend so-and-so isn't here today. So it's a really good learning activity for them. Our iPad activities, we do use them one to two times per week. I know in my classroom, we built them into the instruction. We did about two 15-minute sessions of iPads during the week. And we do typically try to tie it into whatever curriculum unit that we are currently working on. For example, my class did the pets unit last year, and we were able to get an app that allowed them to practice being a vet when we were talking about providing medical care for animals, so they got to practice doing bandaging and things like that, so. Some interesting things that have been happening this year, we've been incorporating a lot of STEAM activities into our curriculum. One thing that we did this year, we had, every week, a teacher would plan a science activity that we would go down to a room, and every child in the school would participate in this particular science activity. If you've walked by our school, you'll see in the back that we have the Jesse Thackeray Pizza Garden, the JT Pizza Garden. And the kids worked really hard on that last year, planting all of the, all of the vegetables. We have peppers and basil and tomatoes, and it's coming along really nicely. I was outwatering it today, and it's getting pretty tall. So we did a program called Tin Can Poetry, which one of our teachers went to training for last year, and really, that is an exercise that just allows us to do activities that expand the children's story time, where we can talk more about what they, what they learned from a story, and just expands some literacy concepts for them. We did have, once a week, we had Ms. Susan come in for Music Together and do music classes. We've had librarians come over. We had the librarian come in yesterday from Mary Riley Stiles Library, and the kids love library time. Gross motor groups. We have Ms. Vicki, our PT, thank you. Our PT come in and run a gross motor group for every class once a week. And our giraffe room, which I kind of mentioned before, is a multipurpose room that we're using where each teacher is responsible for setting up a dramatic play activity or a science or art activity that the whole school can go down and enjoy over the course of a week.
So with that wonderful description, let's take a look at children. It has sound, which is not playing, so I put sound in here. So now it's going to look like a long time before the slides advance. Here's our Earth Day investigations. Kids drawing and recording what's happening with our gardens. Here's some gross motor fun, gross motor group, beanbag tosses. Not as good without the music here. A nature walk, again, one of the units we do a lot with is trees, so there's a lot of outdoor activities. Storybook time. On the left, that's one of our MEH volunteers. We loved having the MEH students come and read and play with our kids. On the left, finding things with iPads that are made from trees, taking pictures then reporting back. Story retell with the iPad. Here's an example of attendance. With the kids, we get to see how the children write their names. Art, a lot of artwork indoors and outdoors. That's painting with trees. Patterns and measurement. We've been really focusing on math and science this year. We've measuring with bottle caps, you'll see a slide later, measuring with blocks. Cooking fun, again, an example with a smartboard. When we use a smartboard for a story or something like that, everyone in the class can see it. Pretend play, dramatic play. We have the space center, a pizza, a pizza shop, and a dentist's office. Lot of sensory play. Some science experiments. Painting with ice and creating the foam. More STEAM activities, blowing up balloons, taking care of the garden. Literacy activities, making letters with our bodies, using multisensory things to trace over letters, drawing under the table, so we're working on our fine motor skills and upper core strength. Block play, and we're measuring how big students are with blocks. And just hands-on learning fun. Pegs and pumpkins, ice cream shop. Lots of fun things. The last thing I wanted to share with you, and I know you have a copy of this, is, this is the pre-K PALS data. Again, this is given to all the children who are four and going to be turning five to go to kindergarten, and it looks at a number of different skills. And we give it fall, mid-year and spring. And when you see the black dotted lines, they're between like five and six on the top item, that's the developmental range that we would, we would hope to see the children by the end of the school year. So these are our at-risk students, and in terms of name writing, they all met the developmental range. Identification of uppercase letters. All the children met the expected levels. Lowercase lev, they don't all do lowercase letters unless they score certain level for the uppercase letters, which is why you see a different number of students. All the students that were ready to work on that met those levels. Beginning sounds and words. Print and word awareness. Again, all students met the expected levels. All students met the level, and nursery rhymes. And the teachers, like all the teachers in our schools, will look at like their fall data and see, okay, how did my students in my class perform? What kinds of things do I need to build into the program? Right, ladies? And what do I need to focus on? The same with our report card and our building block standards. The building block standards for the four-year-olds cover the state, those are our SOLs for preschool that the state has mandated, and we report on those categories three times a year. So if students aren't progressing in, say, the math standards, then the teachers will focus on that. When we look at our tuition students, you'll see that all but one met the name writing And all but one made the uppercase letters. All the students that were ready for the lowercase got the lowercase letters. Letter sounds was really strong. We do a lot of phonemic awareness activities in the classes. Print and word awareness. A lot of growth in that. Rhyme awareness. And all at the expected level. And nursery rhymes. Then our students with disabilities. All our students with disabilities met all the levels and all the skills. Name writing. Uppercase letters. Lowercase letters. Letter sounds. Beginning sounds. Print and word awareness. Rhyme. And nursery rhyme. I have to give credit to Catherine Barr, one of our preschool teachers who assembled all these graphs for me. So looking ahead, some of the things we, our preliminary plans for next year, although I suspect when we come back together, we'll identify some other plans that we'd like to accomplish, but in terms of our STEAM action plan, the engineering lab is our next item on the list. Catherine Barr will spearhead that effort in the building and kind of lead that professional development and support with the rest of the team. It's something that she's done when she was in her graduate program. Second Step, we're very excited about. We were able to purchase a Second Step, a second, Second Step kit with the PBIS grant money. And Second Step is a program that you, teachers, it's short. You do it daily, and you're teaching skills, social, emotional and appropriate behavioral kinds of skills to preschool children. We got the preschool version. We got it mid-year this year. So we kind of dabbled in it a little bit, but next year, we'll be able to kind of hit the ground running with two kits. And the teachers, just, it's a short lesson that you do in circle time with the children, has puppets. It's a program that we're also using at Mount Daniel, kindergarten level, and also at TJ. We are always looking at enhancing our positive behavioral support systems in the preschool. And we just completed putting together with the help of some parent volunteers our take-home book bags. So now we have take-home book bags for every child. I'll have to see if we have, if we need another one for next year, but each child's going to be able to check out. We have a volunteer that will help, you know, check out the bag, and they can take it home. We have some books in Spanish, and that way, children are kind of checking out books from our library and getting to take those home with their families. And that is it. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for a, for a very thorough presentation. Questions? Ms. Rain Kuma.
Ms. Germer, I have a question about eligibility for the special needs at Jesse Thackeray. Is it the parent that requests the testing or the, to be eligible? Is it the school that requires it? Is it voluntary? Is it mandatory? How does a kid, you know, get into that, into the program?
Well, a call or referral or a request for a screening can come from any number of sources. Typically, if it's a family, we might have a family who has a child in a private preschool, and the private preschool says, oh, you know, we're, you might want to find out and see if there's, we're noticing this, maybe you want to contact Childfind. We have parents who are pediatricians have said to families, gee, they're not, you know, they're, you know, not quite developing their language skills to the level, you know, can you reach, you want to reach out to the school system and schedule a Childfind screening. If we have a child with us who is not a student identified with a disability, and we've put some interventions in place and we have concerns, then we can talk to the family and say, gee, we're noticing this, you know, we'd like to have a meeting and talk about it, and then that's initiated from the school side if they're one of the students with us. But typically, if they're not in the school program, they're getting recommendations from outside individuals, whether it's, you know, family members, pediatricians, or the parent themselves is concerned. A lot of the phone calls we get are from parents who say, I'm worried that my child's not talking as much as they should be.
All right, so it's not something we offer. We have to, effectively, we're not proactive. We, we have to react to, to the parents. Is that what you're saying?
We have to advertise the fact that we provide Childfind responsibilities. So that's the mandate. We have it, you know, posted on the website. We communicate it to the private preschools in the city so that people are informed that that's a service we provide. We're required to do that, not just for preschool, we're required to do that for, like, St. James. So I have to go to St. James and talk to the team, you know, make sure that St. James is telling their parents of students who attend St. James that we will, were available if they're concerned. So that's a mandate that we are notifying, that Childfind is open, but we're not going out and doing like mobile developmental screenings or anything like that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Redinger.
Thank you, Ms. Germer. One thing you didn't cover in your presentation is the, and perhaps this is more a question from Mr. Kimball than you, but what's the all-up cost of operating Jesse Thackeray? So it's useful to see what the outsourcing cost, if you will, would be, but it's important to also know what the insourcing budget for this are. So I don't know if that's you or Mr. Kimball or Dr. Jones, but I'd very much like to see a roll-up of all of the different things that go to Jesse Thackeray. If I could do it with myself, you know, adding up the different buckets in the line item budget, but that's probably less efficient and less effective.
Yeah, I'd probably want to let Mr. Kimball or Dr. Jones answer that so that I, I don't, I might miss something in the column or not do the math correctly.
I had a couple of questions. So, so in terms of the Childfind still struggling with understanding its operation, so people move in, people move out, how does that, somebody moves into Falls Church next week, what's the, like, how would Childfind find them or vice versa?
So if it's a family that moves in that has a child who's already been identified as a child with a disability, then we have to take that, we have to provide services. So we have, for instance, a student who's starting with us this summer, who So we have, for instance, a student who's starting with us this summer who has an IEP and we will do a transfer IEP and then get to know the student and then develop our own IEP. So families who have children with disabilities know when they move somewhere, you know, that they have to contact. If families are moving in, again, the notification kind of mandate is really through having it advertised on our website, making sure that providers in the, you know, all of the sort of social agencies know about us and know that the school, what the school system does. So if a family's working with a private family therapist or whatever in the city, you know, those individuals know that we offer those services. So it's our communication with all of the individuals that that family might come in contact with and then our public notification. I mean, we certainly can be, you know, put in place things like, you know, quarterly Childfind reminders through morning announcements, you know, if that would be helpful to get that out and more visible on a, on a kind of a messaging basis rather than just the website. And that would, that's certainly doable.
Okay. Second question is, in your deck of pictures, there were several going on nature walks and things like that. What's, what's the outdoor component of the Jesse Thackeray day-to-day world? And is, is there recesses such or what's, how does the outdoors figure into the educational program?
Do you want, why don't I let one of you ladies answer so you can speak directly?
Sure. Well, we all do playground time and we get to utilize actually the park next door as well. So, you know, either or, we use both playgrounds. Generally, I guess the younger classes go out about twice a day and they do about 20 minutes. Older classes generally go out for about 40 minutes. So that would be recess time and it's really up to the teacher's schedule how they set that up. And then same thing, we had the GTP garden, we're working on that, we had garden workdays. Really, I mean, if we build into the curriculum, it's really on the teacher themselves and what they're, they're planning for the day, what their plans are to bring them out. I like to be outdoors, so I'll set my centers up, especially, you know, in June, I had everybody out for water play and everything else set outside. Yeah, it's really just what the teacher's discussion is for exploration.
And what we, what we do is, you know, the playground is relatively small, the one that's with the school. So we, we have, we have to come up with a schedule when, so the teachers kind of identify when they're going to go out because we really can't have too many classes out there at the same time because it's too many little bodies running in a little enclosed space. So we do like to use the park at Freddie Park and actually that is the handicapped accessible park. So we definitely need to use that sometimes if we have a student in a wheelchair. So all the teachers have a scheduled time and they build their schedule around what works for them. But they also take advantage of the tennis courts sometimes. The biggest challenge is when we have crummy weather and then we're, then we use whatever time we're supposed to go outside in the indoor recess room. So the multipurpose room. So we have different pieces of equipment we set up so that the children can still get time to move around.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Lawrence.
Two quick ones. One is, you mentioned the multipurpose room and I remember that was the one with all the tricycles in the, in the back on the second floor. But you also said you were at, you were going to be at capacity, which doesn't go with having a room that you can just have filled with bikes. So if you could just explain that, because I think there's probably going to be some confusion that we're filled and every classroom is filled and we're at capacity. And then, secondly, I'm just curious, what do we need to do during the summer? Do we have any programs during the summer or are the state mandates school year-based as opposed to year-round?
Those are two great questions. I'm really glad you asked them. When I said at capacity, I meant for having five teachers. We have as many students, if they all show up, that we can take with five classes. We have seven classroom spaces, seven classrooms that can be used. So we do have the capacity to add an additional class in a space in the classroom. But for five classes and five teachers and six paras, if all those students come, we wouldn't have room to take any more students. And we know the students with disabilities come all, you know, just kind of trickle in all year long. In terms of the summer, we do have a summer program. We serve our at-risk students. All of our at-risk students are invited to participate with no charge and our students with disabilities. So we have two classes this summer, about 23 students between the two classes. And those students are working with a teacher. We actually have two paraprofessionals in each class this summer because we have, you know, some, some high needs in those classes. Actually, Cindy's teaching one of them this summer. So we do provide, it's, we run the same schedule as the Mount Daniel TJ in terms of the August or the July 5th through August 4th. And the students with disabilities, as they will in the regular schools in the summer, could potentially be students with extended school year services in their IEP, which means we're required to implement those services, we're obligated to work on those goals, we're obligated to report progress.
Okay, thank you. Especially on the capacity, because we had a lot of talks with the Cherry Street neighbors and made it clear that we were building for something that would take a while to fill. So I just want to make clear that we're not filled the first year and starting to scramble. So, thank you.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you very much for coming out this evening and for an interesting and thorough presentation. So, and thank you for all the hard work that you do in laying the foundation for educating students of Falls Church who are, are the youngest of the bunch. So we very much value and appreciate your work, so thank you.
Thank you to the teachers. Thank you for joining me tonight. All right.
All right, we'll head now to the consent agenda. I would seek unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda. Okay, without objection, so ordered. Now we come to item nine on the agenda, approval of VSBA delegate and alternate delegate. Would anyone care to propose a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board continue to, oh, sorry, wrong one. I move that the school board approve Margaret Ward as the VSBA delegate and Erin Gill as the alternate delegate to represent the FCCPS School Board at the 2016 VSBA Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting at the VSBA Annual Convention in November.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
That is.
Thank you, Mr. Rain Kuma. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Now we come to item 9.02, food service. Dr. Jones.
And this was a request of Mr. Kane that we actually have this item back on the school board agenda, just so that there's an official action. And this is after one of the reviews he had with VOE, said that they would like to see an action on this. And this is where you are approving for him to utilize the Alaska and Hawaii standards with local funding only, this does not count for federal, qualification of free and/or reduced. And the school board put this in place, I want to say, two or three years ago, after much discussion about how we could continue to offer better services for our at-risk families in Falls Church. And one thing that you'll notice when you look at the chart is that Northern Virginia really should have its own little chart on here, just like Alaska or Hawaii, because the cost of living is so high here in Northern Virginia. So when you apply the same standard that you would to Ohio or Oklahoma or, you know, Kentucky, it just doesn't work for our families. So again, this is only for local eligibility, where Richard looks at not only the federal standard for Virginia, but he also can look and see if they earn a little bit more money, where they would be in Alaska or Hawaii. It allows the family to get free and reduced meals in Falls Church. And again, that's something that is a school board initiative and has been for a couple of years.
Mr. Lawrence.
No, I would just stress, because it sounds sort of complicated and odd that we're benchmarking Alaska and Hawaii. We're doing this so that more people are eligible for free and reduced lunches in an area where the average income is a lot higher. So the point of this is to spread the net wider and try to help more people than we would otherwise.
That is correct. And just as a reminder, something that the school board put into place, it's been longer than five years, I want to say six or seven, is that any family in Falls Church who qualifies for free eligibility for meals or reduced, they both receive free meals. So even if they only qualify for reduced, we do use part of our operational funding in order to help support that.
Other questions? I have a question. In terms of using both Alaska and Hawaii, does that just allow choosing between the two? It seems Alaska in general is higher. I'm not seeing it on every single line item, but simply you can mix and match and find whichever of the two is higher that we have the discretion to use that?
Right. When we, when we put this in place, we thought that it was best that we utilized the chart that they put out on an annual basis. So it could change, you know, not that it does every year, but the federal government updates it. And those are the three components that you'll see on the chart is just the United States, you'll see Alaska and you'll see Hawaii. And so we just wanted to be able to use this one document that is updated annually and given to the school districts to use as their guideline.
Okay, all right. With that, I would ask if anyone would care to propose a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board continue to support the use of the Hawaii and Alaska free and reduced scale for determining, for determining locally funded free and reduced eligibility.
Thank you, Mr. Rain Kuma. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, thank you very much. Now we come to item 9.03, update on George Mason trailers. Dr. Jones.
And this is just a follow-up from the work session that we had tonight where Mr. Padilla presented some pictures of what is happening with the six classrooms, the three different trailer buildings that we have, sorry, four, that we have at George Mason. And, you know, we inspected them at the same time that we found the trailers were failing at TJ. They were still okay at that time, two years ago. We inspected them again last summer. This summer, we felt like we needed to really do a thorough inspection once our students went home for the summer and teachers were gone. And as we got into the trailers, we have found that the trailers, from the opinion of our entire maintenance staff as well as my opinion, that we need to move those six classrooms out of those trailers. Two of them, when we removed the floor, just the floor is giving away. The other classrooms, it's, they're just rotting. They, the insulation is wet, the walls are literally falling apart. And I'll defer to Mr. Lawrence, who had an opportunity to tour this evening before the meeting, if you want to add anything. But it really is relocating six classrooms. And what this means long-term for us is that, you know, the building was built for about 750, we're up around 800 students right now. We are utilizing every ounce of that building. And so to move six classrooms back inside the building means that we don't have a lot of wiggle room in there. And we have also, as we talked about at the work session, added classes like, you know, our Maker Studio, hybrid learning takes up one space, it's expanding to another area. We have a resource lab now that we didn't have, you know, four or five years ago, that students access all day long for assistance. So we don't have a lot of space in that building. And it does mean, we think we can make it work because we were able to dismantle those computer labs as we went towards personalized learning, which gained that kind of capital space back in that building. That's saving us right now. We are also capturing the TLC, which many of you know the TLC, it's that great big meeting room. That will now be two classrooms, so we won't have that meeting space. But we think we can keep our head above water if our projections, you know, come in accurate for Walden Cooper for about four years before we'll have to really either look at a total different utilization of space or get more trailers. But the good news is, we're really trying to make it work without going and investing in another million dollars' worth of trailers.
Any questions? Mr. Lawrence.
Not, well, one question, one comment. I did go over, and for people who weren't here for the work session, I went over this evening. And, well, first, the question, Tony, is will Sevi's presentation be on board docs on the website so people can actually see what the trailers are like?
It will. And then we also, because it's recorded, we could even take that segment and make sure that that's on the web as well. But yes, the pictures will be available.
Okay. Yeah, because there are huge holes in the floor as you walk in. It was dry and I didn't want to walk anywhere near it, let alone when it was wet. The insulation, you reached in and it was dry where it had been sitting for a few hours open and then up further, it was wet and lovely colors and obviously not healthy for anybody. So we're lucky, we've moved grades a few years back or we wouldn't have the room inside. So I fully support, I think everybody does, getting the kids out of there and not sending them back at all.
Other questions? I had a question. So there's not going to be any reorientation of other rooms. This trailer, classrooms are going to move into the new spaces such as the TLC, so there's not going to be an effort to cluster or anything, because the trailers had an English class and economics.
We've worked really hard on that plan. We have the admin team as well over the last kind of week. And they're able to cluster the teachers they feel like need to be next door to each other. So they're being very mindful of that. The other thing they've done is they've gone in and worked with the master schedule so that one of the spaces they're going to use was used by health, but they're able to combine kind of the health driver's edge schedule where those two teachers who don't really mind sharing a space, were able to free up one of those classrooms across the hall that so a teacher can be in there permanently. Because that's one of the biggest challenges, is the teachers that have to move over the summer. And as I walk through today, just the amount of, you know, books and things that teachers accumulate over time, it's a pretty big move for us. We'll bring in a moving company in the next couple of weeks to help us get those teachers relocated.
And then another question, Dr. Jones. What is the fate of the trailers?
Right now, we have a couple of questions that we need to answer. And one is, we know that two of the trailers that are completely failing, the one Mr. Lawrence just referenced where the floor is caving in, we want those demolished and removed from the property. We don't want anybody entering a trailer where we know the floors are that volatile to give away. And so we're getting a quote to demolish those. On the other four classrooms, if it's possible to keep them right now for storage, we would like to do that. What we have to find out is what is the expense to do that is in having HVAC in those rooms, having the fire alarm still connected. We think that, we hope that we're going to be able to keep them because as Mason continues to have enrollment pressures, storage also becomes at a premium because every little closet you have becomes a one-on-one tutoring space. And that's just what happens if school's still up. So that's worked well for us at TJ. And that one trailer that we were able to maintain there has really saved us in that furniture storage and items that you don't want to get rid of, because we repurpose as much as we can in Falls Church. And I don't think people always realize that, but, you know, just watching Liz present, if you go to the preschool, when you first walk in, there's these really pretty, like just aqua wooden chairs and that's what's upstairs and the conference table. Those are the old TJ library furniture that we literally get the spray paint out in the summer and repurpose it, because the furniture itself is really great. But if you don't have storage, then you're just, you end up giving that stuff away because there is nowhere to put it. So, and we know Mason's going to be in that situation very quickly. So we're trying to keep them if we can. The ones for storage, demolishing to.
And with respect to the demolition and the rehabilitation, what's the budgetary picture for that? Where's that coming out of?
Well, anytime we have these unexpected expenses, that's one reason contingency becomes important, especially at the end of the year. But right now, we'll start because it's summer and it's the new fiscal year from the operating budget in facilities. And if, we're expecting it to come in around $30,000, it could be more and it could be less. Until we actually get the quote, we won't know. We're going by what it costs us at TJ in order to demo those trailers was around 25 or 30,000.
And then will there be any investment required to sort of stabilize the four? Or is that, is that included in the 30?
Yeah, they pretty much just come in and tear them apart.
No, but I mean that the four that you're trying to hold on to.
The four that we're trying to hold on to, right now, we do not believe that it's the floor. It's the walls that are crumbling, it's kind of some mold issues, but it's not, it's not where we couldn't store things in there, where a maintenance person couldn't walk in there and go grab a chair. But we're also having a mold assessment done just to make sure that the mold issue is is not so bad that we wouldn't want a maintenance person in there, because the health of our staff is important.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Next, we move to more George Mason, 9.04, George Mason MEH project planning.
And this is just to get it back on as a discussion item. As you know, we tried to have a joint meeting last night with city council, but we didn't have enough school board members that were able to attend that. They did have it on their work session item and had a discussion about that. Mr. Shields and I are still having conversations back and forth about next steps and what we would like to do to organize. I did pass around a sheet tonight, and I think all of you signed that, looking at two more dates, trying to find time for a joint meeting. The challenge has been right now is that the school board weeks that we're off are not the same as city council, and city council's off the following two weeks. So we're continuing to look for a joint date. One thing that Mr. Shields and I are discussing at length right now is what sort of consultant can we get to come in and help lead school board, city council process? Because as you know, from day one, back when we had our planning committee, we both anticipated that this project was going to be enormous as a school superintendent and city manager for us to manage and actually do our regular jobs as well. And so we're trying to really look at who is a consultant that not on finance or those components, but could help lead on the project. And we're hoping that when we have a joint meeting, we'll be able to have that discussion. We would also like to look at kind of a town forum type informational session where we are exploring some of those topics that keep coming up around town, looking at, okay, what does it mean when you talk about modular? Because people are using that word, but they don't necessarily know necessarily what it means, but people want to know more about it. Getting the construction team to present on, okay, let's go back and talk about renovation. What does that mean? What is the quote? Where does the number come from? And actually being able to share information on those pieces as well as the finance because school board and city council, I think, are very aware that we've got a lot of great financial information over the last really, you know, 12 or so months. And we would like to be able to do even a session on, okay, what is that information? Because so much of it was not public. So that's what we're working on right now, and it's really to update the school board that we're trying to get that joint meeting set. It's just difficult right now with both of the bodies' schedules.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Ankuma.
Is there a minimum number from both bodies that is required, or do all 14 of us have to be there?
Generally, I know with a project of this magnitude, Mr. Shields, and I can't speak for him, I can speak for me. If we start getting down to just a quorum of four, it makes me a little nervous because if you have three people who aren't there, chances are we're going to have to repeat the entire meeting anyway because people want to be informed. So if we can find a night where we have one person, maybe two, but it's just such an enormous project. I think when we have more than one or two people that are away on either body, it makes it really difficult.
If we have presentations that can be shared or disseminated, I'm just thinking, sitting and waiting for 14 people to come to an agreement or to meet on a specific day over the next couple of months could prolong some of these issues. And I'm not trying to cut anybody out, and I probably won't be here a lot of part of August. But the question, I guess my concern is, it just, it just keeps dragging. And I don't know that any votes of any significance has to be taken this early, such that if I'm not available or Phil is not available, I don't say he's going anywhere though. But if one or two of us are not available, that should not stop the conversation from proceeding. That's my only concern.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. And if it's one or two, but when we start getting three or four, that's when I, for me, I feel like I don't have enough of the board that can be at a meeting. But that's what we're trying to get is where we'll have, have a majority of the school board and city council that can have a joint meeting to actually talk about next steps.
Mr. Riedinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start off, I think, by agreeing with Mr. Ankuma. I'm a little worried about the passage of time. I agree with the superintendent as well that we need to have the right full set of city council and school board members to kick things off. But I think there are some things that we should start to talk through fairly rapidly. For example, my view is that, you know, we are going to need something, while I wasn't here at the time, or at least I wasn't on the school board at the time, the joint committee that was, existed before with the city council. Because I don't think this is a project that can be managed by both bodies fully. So there will need to be some sort of joint governance body. Second, I think we need to get the planning commission involved because I think we've got a lot of expertise there and a lot of real estate understanding of the city that probably both the city council and the school board lack to quite the same degree, while recognizing, of course, that people like Mr. Lawrence spent a lot of time on the planning commission. I think getting more bodies involved in the effort will be important. And I do think it needs to be a bit of a tiger team effort in the sense that, you know, as was emphasized again tonight with the report on the disintegrating George Mason trailers, we have a wasting asset. We have to move as quickly as possible. We can't move too quickly, but, you know, we need something that amounts to a tiger team and not just a city and, just, excuse me, general government and school staff, but I think some of the elected representatives as well to run through the options quickly and come up with a recommended approach, especially with some of the more interesting alternatives that appear to be developing, at least if I read my public source material around the George Mason site and the perhaps larger area that might be available for development.
Thank you, Mr. Riedinger. Other thoughts?
To Phil's comments that personally, more of the technical expertise and less of the political expertise.
I, speaking for myself, I think we have a couple of immediate challenges. I think the first is, as Dr. Jones mentioned, we need to get a survey of the options and what their cost is, not to the nearest cent, but within 10% of various options. That would mean renovation, that would mean the modular concept, that would mean a new build with development, without development. I think one of the threshold issues is decoupling. What does that mean? How does it work? You can say they're decoupled, but I think they are intimately intertwined, and I think there are huge phasing challenges. So I think we need to get some options from somebody who does this for a living as to what the way forward would be so that we have some sense of the approximate cost. I do think that we have to have a process that will generate a result that people can look at and analyze and discuss because the process has not thus far generated an outcome that people can have that chance to look at and evaluate. I think we will not do this ourselves. We do need good advice, and we need people who can help on the financing. I think the technical process of building a building is, and expanding another is important, but finance is going to be what makes it or breaks it. And we need to get a sense of what affordability is. We need to understand what the initial, one of the things we have to dispose of is this issue of extras, certain features that people may want, and we have to look at what those costs are. And we need then to make a decision on which we can move forward with relative dispatch because otherwise, you know, we are, we have a bizarrely favorable opportunity right now where interest rates are low and maybe even going lower. So we could, we could get a screaming deal if we manage to act within, you know, as long as Brexit doesn't happen, we, well, no, I think, I think the Brits just bought us two more years. But we need to move. And we need to set up a framework, and I think then we need to let that framework play itself out. So I look forward to getting a meeting time. Mr. Webb?
Very briefly, I agree with what you're saying. And then that's where I think where that smaller group needs to come together of a couple of members from our side, a couple of members from general government, and then I would think bringing back in at least a member from the, I think the two most appropriate bodies would be EDA and planning commission to, again, rehash some of what was discussed before, but then having those experts, at least in that small setting where it's not 14 people with 14 different views, with that small setting where folks are gonna, can hear presentations, and then those representatives from each body can then kind of go back to, to the larger bodies of their individual groups to kind of give a presentation of what's going on, asking questions at that point, and then that smaller group. But I think what we're already finding out with trying to, as Dr. Jones was saying, getting the majority of 14 people there, it's a challenge. So I would hope that getting a couple of members from each side there on a more consistent basis, but keeping both sides kind of clued in on what's going on, I think will get us going and get us going a lot quicker than trying to get 14 bodies together, particularly this time of year during the summer where, you know, Mr. Ankuma says, you know, late August, he may be away. I'm planning to potentially be away during the, that first week of August. So it's just a tough time of year right now for, for getting all of us together. But whenever we can get the majority of us together, I think we should at least have a conversation because there have been a couple of meetings that we've had with a couple of different folks between general government and, and schools with some of the, the very things Mr. Castillo is talking about that we can hopefully share and get the ball rolling. I think we don't want to lose too much time that we've lost some now by trying to get the majority, but I don't want to lose much more time, at least getting the framework of things started before September rolls around, and we're still trying to figure it out.
Dr. Jones?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing that concerns me a little bit about doing another planning group, and it's just kind of food for thought, is that that model has not served us well in the last decade. We have had leapfrog. We had, you know, this planning process where we had an EDA member, we had the planning commission. And I think what, what's so difficult is, and maybe this board, this current board is different, but are, do we have five members of this school board who are really willing to support the other two members and what they bring back to us? Because that is really what it comes down to, is whoever's on the planning really is well-informed. They look at things very deeply. Then you come back to the full body, and you've got five out of seven members that don't feel as well-informed, and it's a difficult process. And I think the great thing about the joint meetings, if we will make a commitment to have them, is that everybody is around the table because there's such varying opinions. And ultimately, 14 people have to vote to move forward on this. It's not a small planning committee. So I just share that again from having served on that. I think it was a good process to look at a roadmap, for instance, but I think anything beyond that, we're going to be right back in the same situation, only it'll be a year and a half later.
Mr. Ankuma?
And, and Dr. Jones, I agree with you, but I'm more optimistic that the mandate, let's, let me start with this. The mandate going forward, I believe, will be very different from the mandate of the other committee that was formed. That was to build a, to set up a roadmap. And I think we've gathered enough information of all the experiences we've been through since then will inform what the mandate of this other group is. The only recommendation I would make to the new group, obviously, given that, the constraints are obvious, money, and like, like the chair said, it's about the finances. But we also have to look at the expediency, and like you said, Brexit may have bought us a couple of years, so what can we do with what we have? I think we have a lot more information, and this group will be more focused, if I could put it that way, no offense to the other group. But I think we know a lot more than we did going into the other group. That's the first thing. But again, I think this time, I would vote for having more technical expertise and potentially non-school board and non-city council members with no, I don't want to say agenda, agenda's a wrong word, but with no, let me say more impartial, so to speak, for want of a better word, on there who do this for a living. Because my personal opinion, and I'll be very blunt about it, I thought the other steering committee had too many non-experts, non-technical people, and that just dragged it. So I would prefer that those who know what they're doing, no offense to the other group, but people who build, who develop, who can be impartial and give us the facts, just get on with it and move us along. That would be my suggestion.
Well, I, I think, what we, what we have to do is fundamentally, we have to decide what we want to do, and then we have to let the people who are able to do it, do it. Thus far, we've been unable to decide on a process. We have the school program, which I think is fairly well-developed. And I think the school program is, we could do some nips and some tucks and add scope or take away scope, but the school program is fairly straightforward. Although there's, there was talk of decoupling, there is no way to do the school program without having a roadmap for what the financing and economic development looks like, which suggests to me, we need to set out the school program, refine it, and decide it. We have to say, we are going to have a 1,500-student auditorium, or we're not. We're going to have a pool, or we are not. And then we have to say, that is the school program, it is locked down. And then we have to find out what, what we can get for the budget that we have. But on the flip side, we are going to have the issue of, so what kind of school can we afford, on what phase? And if you decouple, do we have a phased project where we bond the first phase and we develop and finance the second? So I think we need to get to the point where we say, we've looked at renovation, and we've decided that's the way to go, or it's not. We need to say, we need to define what the school program is going to be and how it's going to unfold, and then we're going to need to figure out how the financing is going to work into it. So it's, it's going to be a complicated exercise because of the financial aspect of it. And we could talk about this till the cows come home. I sense there are some relatives of yours in the audience, Mr. Riedinger, who would like us to keep moving along. And I commend the Riedinger children for showing substantial fortitude in the face of extremely adverse circumstances. So we will, we will think about a resolution praising you all for going above and beyond the call of duty. So with that, now we will go to the construction update. Oh, excuse me, 9.05, update on health, health rooms.
And some of you will remember, this is the first year that we've actually presented this information, and I do think it's really valuable for the school board just to know how busy those health rooms really are. Because as you know, everything from mindfulness to actual physical health is becoming increasingly important in schools. The number of children we have with, you know, food allergies and individualized care and students with diabetes. And when you really go through and look at the number of students with severe allergies and EpiPens, just the idea that we have 73, that's a lot. And when you're looking at some of these health-related issues, it's the side of teaching also, and being an administrator, that a lot of community members even, and parents, just don't realize what, how difficult it is for an educator. And so I just, I think the numbers are worth looking at and understanding that we've had 13,106 visits to our health room. You know, that, it's a tremendous amount. And when you look at TJ, and they're just under 5,000 visits, you have one person with these little kiddos coming in and out every day. And again, you know, even at our high school where we've had emergency injections of EpiPens, and as you know, that those are required now for all of the schools, and just the number of people that need to be trained, so much far beyond reading, writing, mathematics that we think about, but knowing how to, you know, handle a student who has colostomy. And a lot of times, people just don't realize that aspect of teaching. We have 315 people who've been trained to use the EpiPen in the school division. Glucagon, we have 22 people who are trained with that. We have eight people who are trained to work with children who have colostomy, a GI tube, you know, feeding tubes. We have six people who are trained to work with those. So again, it's just, it's a tremendous responsibility that our staff take on that I feel like it's great information for the school board to be aware of.
Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Lawrence.
When you first showed this to us earlier, I said it was fantastic. I still think it is. Is there any way we could get something over the last few years? Because knowing that we had 13,000 visits to health rooms is one thing. But I'm kind of curious, are things getting better, or worse, or just more?
I, I think I may be able to, able to get that reporting. I, I'll certainly go back and double-check on that. I can say, as your student enrollment increases, you know, the number of children increase. It's just like, your percentage of special education students may stay the same percentage-wise, but when your enrollment increases, significant needs increase. And I think the health room, we have one person, and I think they're absorbing, 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 just like our custodians have absorbed, and our maintenance have absorbed, and we haven't added staff in any of those areas. But I'll see if I can get a good hard number for you and bring that back if it's available.
Okay, yeah, especially, you know, looking toward a new high school. I mean, one of the benefits of, you know, green building and a lot of the things we're talking about would be a healthier environment for both kids and staff. So, if, you know, looking back would be good, but also keeping it going forward to see, once we get a new high school, how does, how does this impact the kids? I think it would be fantastic, because I think it's going to be a positive impact.
Thank you. Other questions?
I, I would just say, as the parent of children who have used the, the clinics with some regularity, the professionalism and good cheer and kindness of, of everyone who, who works in those clinics is noteworthy. And we, I've seen some examples, both in and out of school, that, that are really quite remarkable, and we're, we're lucky to have them. Now, we come to item 10, future agenda topics. Mindful of the presence of the Reitinger children, I will ask.
Did you want me to talk about construction?
Oh, excuse me. I have target fixation here. Yes, please, construction update.
No, it's late, I'll try to go best. But I do want to point out that the Mount Daniel 2232 hearing with the planning commission is next week on the 21st. And so, we are organizing for that. As you know, the, the new submission went to the planning commission, and the school board has seen that, and that's available. And we did send out a Mount Daniel update as well. And the building is, which I know the school board is aware of, is at 660 capacity for student enrollment, which was the reduction of six classrooms. And I did attend the McLean Association meeting last week. And that meeting was, there was no public comment allowed. It was a fairly quick meeting, and the discussion, they did vote not to support the project. And it was really a pretty quick discussion that Falls Church could maybe find space inside the city limits. And that was, a lot of the discussion was centered around that. The HVAC at TJ is on track, and everything is going well there. As you know, the older section of that building is completely closed right now, while we upgrade all of that. And the HVAC in the office and the gym is working so well that Mr. Swanson was freezing and had to call Sevy and tell him he thought it was about 60 degrees in his office. Because they have it hardwired, so that it will run while they're working on the rest of the building. So, we're working to get his temperature set. But that's better than what we have, have had over the last couple of years, where the air completely goes out. And then, of course, the trailers at GM have added a, you know, another project and, and work on for the staff. In addition, at MEH, as you'll remember, we had to wait until the summer to start the repair work on the sewage line that runs right outside where the daycare area is. We have, as of today, they started jackhammering up the floor. And then the pipe is about seven feet under the ground. So, they were working to get there today. Tomorrow, they'll be jackhammering inside where the drama room is, the Scopo's room. They have to jackhammer there. They discovered a second pipe that had also kind of, I don't know if it's just breakage or it's not aligned in the way that it's supposed to be. But we're looking very carefully at what's in the ground. And they have the insurance person there when they kind of uncover it. Because we are trying to advocate that it was, in fact, we believe, caused by the earthquake in 2011, 12. And we feel that, because after the earthquake, some of you remember, we had to shut MEH down for a couple of days and do repair work out in the parking lot where we jackhammered. This is very much in the same area. And to find two more kind of under the ground that look similar, we really want to fight for insurance to, you know, pay that claim, we're hopeful. Otherwise, it will be, you know, significant cost to us. So, we're working through that right now. MEH is having periods of time with no water. And that's one of the reasons we moved the summer program over to GM this year. And that's working really well, sharing space over there. And that's it.
Questions? All right, now we'll move on to future agenda topics. This is the time where we have board members bringing up items, and depending on the, the board as a body's interest in pursuing those. We will put those on there. We have our list of issues that have been hit and that are still pending. With that preface, does anybody have any items they'd like to raise at this time? All right. Now, we come to the next phase of our meeting, where we are going to the next closed meeting. Would somebody move us into closed, please?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, legal matters under Section 2.2-3711A7, in particular, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, specifically the Mount Daniel project, where such consultation or briefing would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, performance of specific employees.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger and Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Goodell, would you call the roll?
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
All right, we're in for our second closed. All right, would somebody move us back into open, please?
I move that we reconvene an open session.
All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Aye. Oh, sorry, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now would somebody certify the closed meeting?
Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-3711, subsection B of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Goodell.
Uh, Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We now come to the lucky 13 for the Reitinger kids, the superintendent's report.
And since it is like 10:30, I will pass tonight.
Thank you. We now come to board and student liaison comments. We will start with Mr. Ankuma.
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Lawrence.
Not tonight.
Mr. Webb.
No report tonight.
Ms. Gill.
Nothing.
Mr. Reitinger.
I have about 20 points I want to cover.
Okay.
But I'll pass.
Or you could just filibuster and read the classified ads for a few. All right, I don't have anything else. We now have approval of the minutes for May 3rd, 2016, May 10th, May 24th, May 27th, May 31st, May, June 2nd, June 29th. It's usually our custom to go through these in detail and correct typographical errors. But tonight, I will seek unanimous consent to approve the minutes. All right, no objection, that is so ordered. We have materials for board review that I will allow you to look at at your leisure, including an audit representation letter and your enrollment statistics. And now, we will adjourn. And again, my congratulations to the Reitinger children's staying power. We'll see you next time.